Good evening. Welcome to Yorktown Central School District Board of Education meeting for December 5th, 2022. Can I have a motion in the executive session to discuss contractual negotiations and matters specific to the employment of a particular corporation?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Can I have a motion to go back into public session?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Yorktown Central School District Board of Education meeting for December 5th, 2022. Can we please stand for the pledge of allegiance led by the Brookside Kindergarteners, followed by a moment of silence for our armed forces and those in our community who have lost loved ones, especially the father-in-law of Denise Amodio, the father of Debbie Outman, the father of Katie Sherwood, the mother of Kristen Dugugliamo, and a retired teacher of the Yorktown Central School District, Corinna Holgland.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hands down, the best pledge we've had all year. Dr. Hatter, we have good news?
We have, better than good news, we have great news tonight. We have kindergarten students from Ms. McNamee and Ms. Stroud's class here to talk to us a little bit about what they've learning. Ms. McNamee's students, did we have fun reading on Friday when I came in? I love the book that we chose, Peanut Butter and...
Honey.
Honey. But today, we're here to talk about something a little bit different. We're going to talk about the Kibo Hokey Pokey. So as we're hearing our children present, and I think there's going to be an interactive component of the presentation this evening that I'm looking forward to, and I think our board and our community is looking forward to seeing, I just want you to be mindful, these are kindergarten students, and what they're doing is remarkable in the area of coding and robotics in kindergarten. So at this time, I'll turn the presentation over to Mr. Cassarini, Brookside School Principal, and then we'll turn it over to the students at that point.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Hatter, Mrs. Ameling, Mrs. Sanfilippo, Ms. Carbone, board members, parents, teachers, and students. It's a pleasure to be here tonight to kick off the holiday season with a good news presentation. For quite a number of years, the district has been on a journey to ensure that our students are prepared for a 21st century world that is vastly different from the world in which we grew up in. My mother, who turned 92 in August, is a retired teacher. Since her days in the classroom, we have made substantial progress in public education, and much of that progress can be measured through the lens of our Easteam initiatives. I could not think of a better way to highlight that growth than through the district's youngest learners. So tonight, you're going to see a demonstration by our kindergarten students on their valuable Easteam project that they have been working on with their teachers, Ms. Stroud and Mrs. McNamee. We felt that this was a worthy demonstration of excellent news for Brookside for several reasons. First, it shows that learning can be fun. This is important to us at Brookside because it is an essential goal to instill a love of learning in our students. Second, this presentation not only shows a developmental step for the students, but also our growth as an educational institution. It shows how far we have come over the last five years, but yet it is not a culmination. It is merely a stepping stone in our growth as educators and students. Here is Alyssa Arroyo, who worked with us so very closely to provide more technical insight to the students' presentation.
Thank you, and good evening. So Kibo, we chose because it is a low-tech tool, and it's a way to provide students a good doorway to using hardware and coding, and that's really difficult to do at a young age. So the reason we're focusing on that in K1 is because the New York State Computer Science and Digital Fluency Standards are really highlighting that need. So what better way than with a playful robot? So we have these mini lessons that we've done to kind of introduce building a robot and coding a robot, and then we tied some of the dances that they've learned, some of the nursery rhymes they've learned, like the hokey pokey, into this. So the big critical thing is that they have allowed us to collaborate and troubleshoot and teach the rules of coding in a very simple way. So now, we will introduce the students.
My name is Emily from Mrs. McNamee's class.
My name's Mae from Mrs. McNamee's class.
My name is Nico and I'm from Mrs. McNamee's class.
I'm here to represent Vincent from my class.
I'm Seamus from Ms. Stroud's class.
I'm Florence and I'm from Ms. Stroud's class.
I'm Sophia from Ms. Stroud's class.
And I'm representing Mason from Ms. Stroud's class.
Tonight, we're going to talk to you about our work with Kibo. Kibo is a robot.
You can program Kibo to bring the robot to life.
We work together and we took turns.
First, you have to build your Kibo. Then you have to decide for your path for your Kibo. Next, you will scan the blocks, starting with the green block and ending with the red block. Finally, you will press the title button on Kibo and watch him move.
So I just wanted to show you a couple of pictures, there's our students, of this happening in the classroom. So we had a really good time introducing Kibo and starting to learn some basic code and experimenting and collaborating with each other. So now, we're going to build our Kibo and code our Kibo Hokey Pokey, our version of it. Okay, we were going to allow them to do one more code, and it's going to be any kind of dance that they want to create now, and everybody's invited to come and join each group if you would like, and that'll be the end of our night. So I'll just kind of show you, those are the motors they're putting together and the wheels, and that's the Kibo, sorry, that's the Kibo robot, that's the code they're using. And you can build all sorts of things on top of it, so even though it looks really simplistic, it has a really high ceiling. All right, thank you, little ones. You're fantastic.
I just want to take a moment to, first of all, say thank you to the families who were in attendance tonight. I know it's not easy. It's a Monday night in December, and the children, and bedtimes, and all the other demands on your time, but I thank you for coming to this meeting. It's so wonderful for our Board of Education, for myself, to see, and for our community to see, all the great work happening in the classroom. So I know it's a busy time of year, I know just weeknights in general are a challenge, so I appreciate you all coming out, I appreciate you sharing your children with us, they are wonderful in every regard. I had the opportunity to visit a few classrooms last week on Friday, and just so much joy in learning. I want to take a moment to acknowledge our teachers, because there are a lot of demands on their time during the instructional day. Kindergarten is quite an academic year for our students, and for many of our students, this is their first experience with a normal school year, with an uninterrupted school year. So to not only work on the English Language Arts, Social Studies, Science, Mathematics Standards, and all the other things that go in community building, and calendar, and weather, and all of them, how many teeth are missing, and the charts that come with that, but to integrate this into the classroom is just phenomenal. So my thanks to our teachers, to Ms. Arroyo for her work in assisting, where'd Ms. Arroyo go? There she is in the back, for Ms. Arroyo for her work in assisting. Certainly, Mr. Cassarini and Dr. Sandor for their work in supporting what's happening. And I do want to acknowledge our Director of Technology, Ms. Forsberg, who's here. It's her larger vision that assists us in integrating and acquiring these technologies for our students. When I thought about kindergarten, I wasn't coding, I wasn't using robotics in my classroom, I was five, there were other things that we were learning, but it wasn't robotics. I am just so impressed, students, by what you did. You all did such a great job. But I also want to share the public speaking part of this. You had children stand up and address a room full of people, and they did it really well. And that's just another aspect of the program that we have here in Yorktown that will get children comfortable speaking in front of adults, I'm really, really proud in every regard, and keep up the good work. I can't wait to come back into your classroom, and maybe I'll bring a different book this time when I come back.
We just want to thank the teachers for bringing your students out. Students, you were fantastic. I don't code, but your coding in kindergarten is amazing, you did amazing work, and we're so proud of you. And parents, thank you for sharing them with us, they're amazing kids.
So before we dismiss, and we will take a brief recess to allow you to leave, I just want to take a moment to acknowledge three people who are in the room. On Monday, November 7th, a custodial worker in our middle school had a significant medical emergency, and fortunately, there was a guardian angel watching over this staff member, I'm withholding the name intentionally. In fact, there were multiple guardian angels. And on that fateful morning, two members of our Aramark Food Service Team, Kimberly Kleiber and Nancy Rizzo, saw a staff member in need and quickly called for assistance. School nurse Jenna McLoughlin was on duty that morning, she sprung into action, she quickly assessed the situation, provided intervention until emergency responders arrived at the school. I want to commend our middle school administration, who immediately activated our emergency response procedures to limit movement through the building, to ensure first responders could traverse the building without delay. I'm pleased to share that thanks to the quick and decisive actions of Kim, Nancy, and Jenna, our employee is recovering from this medical incident. We anticipate a release from the hospital soon, and hopefully, a speedy recovery. The heroism that Kim, Nancy, and Jenna displayed in a most stressful situation is being recognized here this evening. I'll present you with certificates in a moment on behalf of the district and the Board of Education, but please know, the certificate is meaningful, but it only is a symbol of the lifesaving and heroic actions that you took that morning to help another human being. We are so grateful to you, our family is grateful to you, and as a school district, we say thank you. Come on up. Please.
These three ladies, immediately after helping to save a colleague's life, immediately went back and said, "I need to serve my kids," and Jenna went right back into the nurse's office to deal with stomach aches. I am so proud of them, we're so blessed to have you in the Strang family, and we just wanted to present you with a little angel that our kids made in tech.
We have a really, really fun meeting ahead of us with lots of other business that we're going to attend to. It won't be quite as fun as this part of the meeting where our students presented. You're welcome to stay, or you can use this opportunity to make your way to the exit. I wish you all a safe ride home. Thank you.
I know, but that was great good news, that was great news, we needed to rename it, really great news, on both of the kids. So we're up to public comment, did anybody sign up? Okay, so we're going to move on to our superintendent's update, Ron.
Okay, thank you. So I have a few updates for our community, some really important things to share and to hear. I sent out a winter preparation memo on November 15th to just share with our community the process and procedures for an emergency closure, generally due to weather. Sometimes there's a delay, sometimes we start with a delay, and then due to deteriorating weather conditions, we'll move from a delay to a closure. One of the big questions is who will now be the voice of the snow calls? I will be the voice of the snow calls moving forward, I'm sorry if that's disappointing, but it will be me on the other end of the call. We will have traditional snow days until our snow days are exhausted, and then we'll move to a remote learning platform. We want to try to keep the recess periods intact, we understand that families make plans, and we want to try to respect that time for families as best we can, so we'll use our snow days, and we have snow days built into the calendar, once we exceed, or once we meet the number of snow days that are allocated, we will move to a remote learning environment. Winter sports are up and running, we held the Big Chill this past Saturday, just one of our great winter events. We have winter track teams from all across the region coming to Yorktown to participate in different events. Coach Smith and Coach Korn do just such a great job, and the many parent volunteers who assisted, certainly. Our Pioneer League is up and running, so the schedule will be posted to our website. Just some of the greatest events are through our Pioneer League, if you have an opportunity, you see an event that you can make, please do. They generally start at anywhere 3:00, 4:00, or 4:15, depending on how far the school coming to us has to travel. Next game, so we're aware, is December 7th, that's home at the middle school, and then December 21st is also home at the high school. So the season will continue. I'm also honored to share that we'll be hosting the End of Year Dinner Dance for the Pioneer League team. Mr. Rosen and I felt very strongly about hosting this and bringing that to Yorktown. I'm proud to say, and I'm pleased to say, thank you to Mike Rosen for his efforts. Yorktown will be hosting the Pioneer League team for all of the children across the region in, will be hosting the End of Year Dinner, I should say, and it's a dinner dance, which is just a wonderful event, and Yorktown is the venue for that event. We, I'm pleased to also report that in the next month or two, all of our curriculum maps will be posted to our website. Every grade level, every subject area will be posted to our website, and we're excited for that. We began working on curriculum mapping several years ago, and I just want to acknowledge Ms. Ameling, Ms. Chesser, and Mr. Miller, as well as our principals and teachers for pushing this project over the finish line. So their efforts have been remarkable. Now, the work of curriculum writing is never done, so I say finish line, but the work of curriculum writing is never truly done. It will evolve, and as changes are made, we'll make those updates, but it's an exciting step for us. Concert season is here, December 6th, tomorrow night, high school choir, December 13th, high school band, December 20th, high school orchestra, and when we move to the middle school, December 14th is the middle school band, and the 21st is a combined concert for our orchestra and chorus. Kindergarten enrollment is open, I know it's hard to think about the 23-24 school year, but please contact Patty Sauber as quickly as you can, so that we can better understand what our kindergarten enrollment will be come the fall. 243-8016 is her phone number. We're pleased to be hosting the first LEGO Leaked competition on January 21st at our middle school, more information to come. And just another quick update, our digital sign is down at the high school entrance, we're aware of it, there is a part on order, and we're hoping that that'll be restored quickly. And finally, we're seeing an uptick of RSV and flu cases. If your child's sick, if there's a fever, please keep them home. All the information is posted to our nurse's website, we just want to try to keep our buildings as safe and as healthy as possible. If your child is sick, showing a fever, other symptoms that are concerning, please keep them home, contact the health office. That concludes my report.
So Dr. Hatter, we will be using the Clorox 360, we'll be disinfecting... So Dr. Hatter, we will be using the Clorox 360. Will we be disinfecting our schools during the flu season?
Yes, we'll continue to disinfect the schools. The instructional spaces will be disinfected, yes.
Okay, and then our teachers are reminding kids of good hand hygiene and all that.
Good hand hygiene, good cough hygiene, cough into your elbow as opposed to into the air.
Anything we can do.
So yes, all of those perpetual reminders.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. We are up to policies. The board will conduct a second reading and adoption of the following policies. 8134, emergency closings. 8212, vandalism. 8332, district-owned cell phones. 8334, district-owned credit cards. And 8800, energy management. Do anybody have any questions or concerns? Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Under personnel, we have a resolution. Be it resolved pursuant to sections 3031 and 3019A of the education law, the board having reviewed and considered the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, hereby terminates the probationary appointment of employee number 4760 as a certified teaching assistant tenure area in the district effective January 5th, 2023. And be it further resolved that the board hereby directs the board clerk to notify employee 4760 that their employment in the district shall terminate on the above date.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Personnel, upon recommendation of the superintendent, a motion that the following be approved. We have certified personnel appointments, part-time appointments, other compensations for extra duty. We have coaches removal from the substitute list, and under classified personnel, we have a civil service appointment.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Business office. A motion to approve the 2022-23 asset disposal agreement with Computer Systems Asset Disposal pending receipt of required insurance documents.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed?
And then a motion to approve the budget transfers as listed below?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Special education, a motion to approve the following placements as of December 5th, 2022?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? And gifts, grants, and donations, a motion to accept with gratitude the following gifts, grants, and donations. At Brookside, $30 from the Brookside PTA for field trip assistance. $1,985 from the Brookside PTA for Happy Holidays Around the World School Assembly. $1,186.51 from Yorktown Septa for an adaptive swing at Brookside School. And at Mohansick, $1,186.51 from the Yorktown Septa for an adaptive swing at Mohansick School.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? We are up to board comments. Pete?
That was very enjoyable.
Put your...
The kindergarten class was very enjoyable. So Deirdre and I were talking about, toys have changed quite a bit since we were way back when. So it was excellent to watch.
Terrific. Mike?
Yes, far cry from wooden blocks with no wheels or anything. I would agree, Pete. Yeah, that was very enjoyable on a lot of levels. So thank you.
First?
I'm all good. Thank you.
Carol?
I echo what they've said. I think the Brookside students did a wonderful job tonight. I also am very, very proud of our middle school staff. I mean, really, those angels that were made are definitely worthy and well-deserved. So thankfully, they were here, and thankfully, we have such bright and quick-acting staff members.
Lisa?
Yeah, so my favorite part about the good news tonight was a little boy who was afraid to come up and sat next to his mom. His teacher did his first part, and then they got him. They got his nerve up. And he came up and he did a great job. And then he participated in building the robot. That, to me, that just shows what we're doing, right? That little boy was afraid to come up. And with the encouragement and the guidance and the support of his teachers, he was able to do it. So I'm so proud of that. With respect to the snow day announcements, I don't know if you've seen on social media, Dr. Hatter, but there's a lot of very creative ways in which to do them. There's rap songs, there's videos. We're expecting something big.
At 5:00 AM. It's going to be...
You're allowed to pre-plan.
The, and interestingly, we had this conversation with the district PTA. Each month, I meet with our PTA leadership, and I shared with them the enormity of the decision and how I'm in a household of two working parents. And we had to commute, and it's such a day-changing event to have school closed. And so I come at this with such a serious approach, and I shared with them, "I'm so sorry if I disappoint you. I'm not going to sing. I'm not going to do any kind of fun thing. I take it so seriously." But what I may do at 4:30 in the morning when I'm driving the roads, Brian Marshazer, actually, who's with us in communications, he and I may do a ride-along at 4:30 in the morning. And we may live call, live Zoom, me driving the roads of Yorktown, assessing the conditions to just show our community what goes into the snow day call. So that we may do, but no songs.
No rap songs.
Nothing out of me.
I think what I love most about watching the students was when you watch them in the small groups, how they collaborated. And they worked so kindly together and made sure everybody had a turn. And watching that, it was just, it's what we're all about. So it was amazing. And our staff is so good to each other that they recognize somebody in need and they just sprung to action was just an amazing thing. But it's what we almost expect of people in this district because of their kindness to one another. So we're so appreciative of what they did. So thank you. Ron, Lisa, Deirdre, anything? No? Okay, so we're up to our last public comment? Nope? So can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Good night, everyone.